I have Vajra Kilgore to be followed by Milagros Perez.
Good evening, my name is Vajra Kilgore. I am here representing tenants. I've mentioned frequently that the landlords spend a tremendous amount of money on political campaigns. That money comes from where? This year, we heard that the landlords mounted a very expensive, it was always referred to in the press as a very expensive campaign against the new rent laws. Where did that money come from? It comes, it comes from our rents that they cry are not high enough. They have enough money to buy politicians. Right? But not enough money. There's a handful of, a handful of small landlords that come here every year. They say, "Maybe I'll have to disinvest," but they haven't yet. This is the only business in which a profit is guaranteed. They have only to open their books. Now, this board, for years, has been part of a social experiment. The social experiment has been the transfer of wealth from the poor to the rich. Every year, particularly under Giuliani and Bloomberg, from the poor to the rich, from the poor to the rich. This experiment has already been done. In the 19th century, the word Dickensian did not come out of a vacuum. We, you know what the result of continually raising rents is. Okay, last year, I suggested that you read Matthew Desmond's book, Evicted. You may have heard him on the radio. Who gets hurt the most by rent burdens? Children. Who gets hurt the most by homelessness? Children. We have 61,782 homeless people in New York City, including nearly 15,000 families with over 21,000 children. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but people have found that homelessness can be as traumatic for children as a war. Now, you may continue to make war on the poor here. But if you do your job, which is to prevent rent gouging, you will vote for a rollback. And at the very least, you will freeze our rents.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Kilgore, Ms. Kilgore, Ms. Kilgore.
Oh, I had a quick question, I'm sorry. As folks so eloquently thank you.
Oh.
Is your mic, is your mic?
I, oh, is it on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony. One of the points this year that a lot of landlords are bringing up is that because of the rent laws, can you hear me? Because of, because of the rent laws, that the increases should be higher this year. And I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to that, because you spoke so eloquently just now about just the policy behind things.
Okay, thank you, actually, for that. The rent, what the rent laws did basically was to stem the steady hemorrhaging of rent-regulated apartments in this city. So, for example, in my building, for the last 10, 15 years at least, whenever somebody moves out or dies, the apartment has been renovated and then taken out of rent stabilization. So, the landlords are making huge profits. I know you freeze rents for SROs, where there's only a certain percentage of rent-stabilized apartments, but if you started to do that in regular apartment buildings, those rents would stay frozen forever. So, there was, there's been this tremendous, tremendous hemorrhaging of rent-regulated apartments. There has been tremendous profit that the landlords have made over all these years. And I, just, just to make a final point, you know, I would caution against false equivalencies. Because very often, when after the vote is taken here, the, the board says, "Well, I guess we did the right thing because everybody's mad. The landlords are mad and the tenants are angry and the landlords are angry." Well, landlords, by and large, the vast majority, the ones that aren't here, they're mad because they can't get that second house in the Hamptons or that third luxury car. And the tenants are angry because they can't feed and clothe their children. They have to choose between food and medicine if they're elderly. That is so wrong. That is so wrong. And there is no reason to compensate the landlords because injustices of years and years have gone on and on and on, and now it's stopping and they're like, huh, huh, huh. Well, then you have to give us an extra injustice now because they took those other ones away. And no, it doesn't work. And thank you for the question.
I have Milagros Perez to be followed by Brad Hirsch.
Thank you for allowing us to voice ourselves. My name is Milagros Perez. I live at 50 West 93rd. You recently heard from Sharon Cairns, our leader for the Tenants Association. We are under stellar management. I've been raised and lived between 87 and 93rd Street, between Central Park and Columbus. I came into 50 West 93rd at age 16. This is my neighborhood. Went to school, then worked for 27 years in the neighborhood. I raised my children, took care of my parents here. I have never thought of living anywhere else. I am now 62 years old and cannot imagine of how I would survive anywhere else. I'm on a fixed income, and where would I go now that they want higher rents? We need to fight not only for being, for all our seniors and neighbors that call this home. Between paying rent, food, and medicine, we cannot afford a higher rent. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Brad Hirsch to be followed by Alvin Doyle.
Hi, good evening. My name, my name is Brad Hirsch. I've been managing real estate in New York for approximately 10 years. I apologize if my remarks aren't so polished. I just wanted to stop by tonight because I happen to be in the neighborhood. I wanted to talk a little bit about the real impact of what you do here. I've managed buildings that have been severely mismanaged. And we've taken over buildings that have been allowed to fall into severe states of disrepair. I've gotten two buildings out of AEP, which is when a landlord really lets buildings go. I can tell you that we rely on the increases that you approve here. I've seen buildings, we, we take under-managed buildings and we try to turn them around. I've had buildings where we've had, seen great success, where we've renovated lobbies, put new boilers in, fixed the roof, fixed the windows, done the pointing, and really turned buildings around. And then I've had, had buildings that have failed, where we've had to just sell them. With the new rent laws that have just been put into effect, any increases that we would have anticipated from free-market units are now under your jurisdiction. What the new rent laws have really done in New York is put the ball in your hands, where it's really up to you if a lot of buildings make it or fail. I can tell you there are buildings in bad neighborhoods where we've brought the buildings up. We've sold buildings, we've sold buildings where, we have sold buildings where we've had, where we've had new people take over only for the tenants to wish that we came back. Now, you see this? I understand, it's an emotional argument, and I understand that people do want to have lower rents. But there is another side to this. We try to provide quality housing. We truly try to do the right thing by our tenants, as evidenced by the tenants who have called us after we've sold to landlords who don't try to do the right thing. So, all I can say is that we hope that you'll consider our side of the equation in your decision. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So, just as a reminder, from, from our perspective up here, we are looking to hear the testimony of everyone and to give everyone the courtesy and the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you all do the same. You don't have to, but that, that's part of civil discourse. That's, that's what we're trying to achieve up here. Thank you. I have, I have Alvin Doyle to be followed by Taysha Clark on behalf of Senator Brad Hoileman.
Hello, my name is Alvin Doyle, and I live in Stuyvesant Town. I want to acknowledge the Rent Guidelines Board for your steadfastness and service to this process. I also want to acknowledge the tenants who are here and throughout New York State for their commitment to affordable housing and to New York City. And if you notice, there are many young faces in the audience tonight. These young faces remind me of when I used to start coming to these Rent Guidelines Board hearings. In the old days, Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village, where apartments were occupied by police officers and their families, firefighters and their families, sanitation workers and their families, teachers, nurses, writers, artists, and many other fine people were my neighbors. My father was a newspaper reporter, and my mother worked for Underwood Typewriter Company before I was born. Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village residents were the tax base for Manhattan. Okay? That New York is vanishing. Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village residents have been battered by MCI rent increases and, and when apartments become, when apartments become vacant, by vacancy increases and by the individual apartment improvement increases. I ask that you pass a 0% increase for a one-year lease and a 0% increase for a two-year lease.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Taysha Clark on behalf of Senator Brad Hoileman to be followed by Daniel Cohen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Taysha Milagros Clark testifying on behalf of State Senator Brad Hoileman. Thank you, Chair Reese, and members of the Rent Guidelines Board for the opportunity to submit testimony. I represent New York State's 27th Senate District. This mixed-income district is comprised largely of tenants, 52,000 of whom are rent-regulated, both in small buildings and iconic complexes. As such, these proposed rent guidelines carry enormous weight in my district, and I believe New York City as a whole. After the board's decision to increase rents last year, a rent freeze would provide a much-needed respite from the constant financial anxiety and burden New Yorkers face. Advocates are pushing for a rent freeze this year, and I join them in this request. New York City is deep into an affordability crisis, and I find that the proper role of government is to be a bulwark against homelessness, displacement, and further economic segregation. Given this, I was disappointed, disheartened, and frustrated to learn that the RGB has suggested rent increases for rent-stabilized apartments. As you know, the RGB's mission is to create price points that would be present in New York City rent if market were operating under free, fair market conditions. A vacancy rate of 5% is considered the line of demarcation for properly-operating apartment market. And the current vacancy rate of 3.63% has said to be a sign of dangerous instability calling for government intervention. But it is time to move past our fascination with percentiles and instead have a genuine discussion about the purpose of rent regulations, who we believe can call New York home, and the real impact that these laws have. This affordability crisis and the liberalities of our constituents are the reasons why I can proudly declare it today that I joined my colleagues in the New York State Legislature in voting to pass a historic package of bills to reform New York's rent laws. For too long, tenants have not had the same protections or access to resources as their property owners. They have not been afforded a true right to shelter, a true warranty of habitability, equitable living conditions. We are changing that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Daniel Cohen to be followed by New York City Councilmember Helen Rosenthal.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to testify today. My name is Dan Cohen. I'm the Democratic State Committeeman for the 69th Assembly District on the Upper West Side. And although I work professionally in affordable housing, my story tonight is more of a personal one. I was born and raised in rent-regulated housing, in rent-controlled housing, and I'm good, lucky enough to live in rent-stabilized housing now. In both circumstances, when I was being raised in the city and today, there is no way I would have been able to afford to live in the city without the rent stabilization laws as they existed and as they now have been revised. My mother, who is, don't tell anybody, she's a senior, shh, and she lives on a fixed income. And her rent, under rent control, was seven and a half percent every year, year over year, and it punished her to the point that her rent is now more than half of her fixed income every year. And although the recent legislative changes now provide some relief for that, she is still suffering and will suffer with those high rent, rents for the duration of her life. May she live a long, long time from today. And today, asking for a 0% increase and a 0% for one- and two-year leases will at least give some justice to the burden that she faced, which is shared by more than a third of New York City residents who are similarly rent-burdened. It's absurd, it's outrageous, that we would consider a rent increase when there's been such a tremendous burden on so many people. Most of them are seniors like my mom. And the rent regulations that we have that have been changed now provide for some constraint, some, some restraint against some of the egregious episodes that happened. But I don't want to make this 100% pro-tenant. I'm going to give a tiny bit of acknowledgement to some of the very tiny landlords who are struggling to survive, family-owned buildings. But there are provisions, there are opportunities for them to be able to seek relief. It should not be in the back of tenants. That's my testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rosenthal to be followed by Robert Conkling.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for spending all this time thinking about these issues that are incredibly important to our landlords and our tenants. And while I don't have prepared testimony, I would, I want to make three points. One is that there's no question, the first one is, I would ask you not to be influenced by what just happened in Albany. The laws that were changed are laws that have been so completely pro-landlord and crushing to tenants for so long, that I would urge you not to have a swift reaction that it's okay to increase rents. It's not. In my district, we lose over 400 units, rent-regulated units, every month. Every month, in my district alone, we track it. And here's why. Sometimes people come in, you may have read about this in the paper, and they say, you know, "We got a notice from our landlord that they're going to work on the stairs every day between 10:00 and 5:00 o'clock. So, during that time, we're supposed to use the fire escape to get in and out." Then, yes, it's ridiculous. And so, we convince the Department of Buildings to issue a requirement that there be a fire warden there day in, day out, and that accommodations be made so that tenants could come and go as need be while the renovation happened in the main stairwell. Guess what? Now, the landlord has applied for an MCI, and included in that application are the bills for the, the fire guard and the cost of the violations that were imposed on them because they were breaking the law. They are now trying to put those costs on tenants in the form of an MCI. You may think this is a crazy story and unusual. It is a bit crazy and unusual, but it doesn't stray so far from the stories that we hear in our office every single day. So many, while, while we try hard to make sure that everyone is signed up for screw or dree, so many tenants come in and say that their rent is far exceeding 30% of their income, so they don't even qualify. So many tenants come in and talk about the type of harassment, constructionist harassment, lack of heat and hot water, lack of safety, frankly, in their own building, that we know that really, these tenants are under, under attack. And the truth of the matter is, most of them lived on, live on a fixed income. And so, any rent increase is a burden that will only add to the difficulties they have and more likely than not will result in an eviction and ultimately homelessness. And when we think about the homeless crisis in New York City, really, it comes down to just one thing, that is the cause, and that is the lack of affordable housing. And every time the Rent Guidelines Board meets, I think it's incumbent on you to think hard about not adding to the crisis of homelessness, keeping rents, keeping a rent freeze on so that people can, despite the fact that they are hanging on by their fingernails, at least have a chance of staying in their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Robert Conkling to be followed by Lino Alvarez.
Good evening. My name is Robert Conkling. I live at 215 West 14th Street, which is a residential, rent-stabilized SRO. And I'm here representing my fellow tenants to thank you for your protections. And if it weren't for you and our, and organizations like Goddard Riverside, we would not be here. If my landlord were here tonight, I'm sure she would say that she's going broke and she cannot afford to keep pumping money into our building. But she cannot, but, but I don't want to belabor the point that she's spent the last four years in court with us, and she has lost every single case, spending money on lawyers rather than putting money into maintenance. I don't want to belabor the point that there is a high-rent pharmacy in our building, an illegal B&amp;B in our building, apartment warehousing, and good old-fashioned rent gouging, not to mention those lawyer fees. But I really am here just to say thank you, to allow us the opportunity to start our careers at the beginning of them and to retire with dignity at the end of them, and to spend whatever disposable income we have in our local businesses and charities and get involved in local community services and activities, and to help protect this venerable and honorable housing stock which has been decimated and continues to be under attack. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Lino Alvarez to be followed by Caitlin Letery on behalf of Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal.
Mr. Alvarez.
Hi, Chair Reese, members of the board. Thank you for giving us SRO tenants on other rent frees. I've been a rent, an SRO statutory tenant for 30 years. And back in 2002, my building was 100% rent-stabilized, and today, there's only two of us left. So, I find it very difficult to believe that my landlord, I just came from housing court today, again, by the way, would need money, you know, when my neighbors are paying $3,000 a month, $5,000 a month, $4,000 a month, you know, and all the SROs are gone but me. If it weren't for Goddard Riverside, I wouldn't be a survivor of harassment by construction. And if it wouldn't be by Goddard Riverside, I wouldn't be a survivor of a fire after the new landlord took over, and my mother is a survivor of that fire as well. So, when I see this increase for our one-year and two-year brothers and sisters, I have to say to you, after 25 years of vacancy de-control and years and years and years and years of rent increases, the most or least, I guess, we could do is just give us, or give them a rent freeze as well. You know, it says here 3.75, and I look, oh, this is only 3%, you know, but you know, over 10 years, that's 15%. Then over 20 years, you're talking one-third of your income if you're elderly or disabled or on a fixed income or a student or in the arts, and I've been all those things. You know, it's a challenge. I thank you for giving us SRO tenants a rent freeze, and thank Goddard Riverside. But I tell you, our one-year and two-year lease brothers and sisters need a rent freeze or a rollback to make up for the fact that they've had 25 years of vacancy de-control madness. It's been ma- madness what took over this town after 1993. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. I have Caitlin Letery to be followed by Yitz Blum.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Letery. I'm here representing Assemblymember Linda B. Rosenthal, who represents the 67th Assembly District. I urge the RGB to refrain from imposing any rent increases for rent-regulated lease renewals this year and urge it to instead roll back the rents. The proposed 5% to 2.75% increase for one-year leases and 1.5% to 3.75% hike for two-year leases did not achieve the adequate, an adequate balancing of economic factors affecting tenants and landlords. The RGB is supposed to calculate rent increases by considering and striking a balance among all financial factors. Historically and until very recently, the RGB has voted instead to give landlords unjustifiably large rent increases. And as the RGB granted excessive rent increases to landlords despite the harsh financial realities faced by tenants, the rent-regulated tenants were also forced to pay additional and excessive rent increases in the form of major capital improvements and individual apartment improvement rent increases. As a result, a tenant who has lived in her rent-regulated unit for 40 years is still paying for a boiler that was installed 30 years ago, and by now, that same tenant may well be paying an MCI for a new boiler that has replaced the old one. And that is in addition to the high rent increases year after year. 2019 is actually the year of the tenant, and in the New York State Legislature, with the help of thousands of renters and advocates, we were able to pass the most sweeping, expansive rent protection legislation in years. You have heard and will continue to hear from landlords who will argue that the increases are necessary to address rising costs, especially in the wake of this new reform. But the reality is, I implore you to not let these landlords fool you into believing their situation is dire. In New York City, we have seen a net gain in the last year, but we are not even close to recouping the lost units from, since 1994. Please, in a, consider a rent rollback.
Thank you. I have Yitz Blum to be followed by Lena Melendez.
Hi, my name is Yitz Blum. As you could see, I did not come prepared with any paperwork. I'm talking out of the death of my heart, so please, if you could please me a favor and listen to my words. I used to own a grocery shop a couple of years ago. I sold it, and I had some hard money earned into my pockets. I went into the real estate industry. I bought myself three small buildings all over the Bronx. I used to have somebody that worked for me and did the work for me, the repairs. Unfortunately, a couple of months ago, I had to let him go as I couldn't afford him anymore. My buildings are 75% loaned, and I'm running on a 25% equity. Since then, I wake up every single day 6:00 to beat the traffic. I come to my buildings. I lay under bathtubs. I fix countertops. I do everything with my bare hands. I come home 6:00, I put my kids to sleep. 8:00, I go into the living room and have so much paperwork to work with, if it's HPD, New York City, the DOB. There's nothing I can do. I'm currently in a space where I might lose my buildings and they're going to go for foreclosure. I'm not talking about being rich here. I cannot talk for all landlords, but I'm talking for myself. I'm a family company. All I want to do is be able to feed my three children. I do not see my children go onto a bus every day because I have to wake up 6:00. I bust my ass to work. I work every single week, six days a week. That's what I do for a living. I do not see my kids, never, only on weekends. I kill myself for that, my buildings. I'm a tenant myself. I know exactly what it is to be my tenant. I take repairs very extremely serious. I never let any repair more than 24 hours. All my tenants have my cell phone number. They can call me whenever they want, and I take care of it right away. How is it possible for me to save my family and be able to feed them if I do not get a rent increase? All expenses go up. Water bills go up. Taxes go up. The only thing that does not go up is the, is the rent, is the... The only thing that does not go up is the ta, is the rent, is the tenant's paying rent. If that, why is it fair that all my bills should go up and I shouldn't be able to get at least 5% to cover it? I'm not talking about being, I'm covering, I'm talking about covering my buildings that should be able to live as soon as. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bloom, Mr. Bloom, uh, there's a question.
Um, you spoke about possibly going and having your buildings go into foreclosure. Can you help us understand if you've approached applying for a hardship burden appeal with HCR and why or why not?
Sure. Basically with the new, currently, a lot of tenants feel that they don't have to pay their rent. They take their time in court. Every sing, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna answer. Every single month, I get list tenants not paying and I have to come off my pocket, which I don't have. I am currently on a specific building, two months behind and paying my mortgage. That is because the tenants do not pay. I'm extremely close with all my tenants. When the tenants tell me to have something, I try to live with them. I know all my tenants by their first names. I'm very close with them. I'm actually coming right now. I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually coming right now from a tenant's apartment and he's even going to come here and talk to me. It's almost impossible for me to apply for any type of program and get approved because I have no equity on my hands. I'm, I'm running on a 25% equity and I can't run. I don't have a secretary. I do everything myself. I'm a one man band.
You know, Mr. Bloom, just, just, uh, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna again, I'm gonna again ask, I'm gonna again ask that we, we try to establish a civil tone here. Um, we want to learn from each other. We want to hear the testimony. The, the whole point of a hearing like this is that people get an opportunity to be heard. If we can't hear answers up here, we're not learning. Um, and we want to show the same respect to each speaker that every speaker who came before received. So, um, I, I, I guess if you could kind of summarize your answer again, we'd appreciate it.
So they're not going to approve me for any type of loan because I do not have enough of equity in my building. I'm running on a 25% and the expenses are way more than that.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you.
I have, I have, I have Lena, Lena Malendez to be followed by Jose Cruz. Ms. Malendez? Oh, Mr. Malendez, I'm sorry. Oh, you're Mr. Cruz. I, I'm sorry, is Lena Malendez present? Okay, I'll put her name to the side. So I have Mr. Cruz to be followed by Ed Figueroa, who had come up previously. Uh, Mr. Cruz?
Yes. Yeah, I will say, I guess the only way we're going to understand each other is by listening to each other. I know there's two parts here. And the only way we're going to be able to comprehend and understand each other is by listening to each other. Just like the gentleman said, the only way we're going to learn is by hearing each other. Excuse me, I,
Excuse me, Mr. Cruz.
I respect your opinion, but what I'm saying is.
Mr. Cruz, Mr. Cruz.
You, you want to speak?
Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz, please, please address the, the board, please.
Okay, this is what I'd like to say. I'm in the Bronx for over 18 years. And the only way, uh, investors are going to be motivated to come and make an investment, to make improvement, there has to be something there for them to go and reach out into their bank account and invest. Also, when their arts building being switched from one owner to the other one, how, what is the motivation of this new owner coming in to make an investment and return of what? What is there for the landlord to get motivated to say, let me come in, maybe as a new owner, I want to put new windows, I want to put a new roof, I want to paint the building, I want to put a new floor and I want to make sure every tenant is leaving in a, in a good environment. Just like, probably like I live in my house. Now, if there's no incentive for this, like, I understand, I'm a tenant myself. And I know that the only way these people are going to get motivated to come and make investment, there's a lot of changes throughout New York City right now. Brooklyn, Queens, the Bronx and Manhattan. And it's because it works for them to come and make this type of investment. Now, the landlord, me, how they going to survive if there are no incentive for them to make an investment? When we had the crash back in 2008, when we had the crash back in 2008, everybody was holding back and nobody invested $1. There was a lot of yard full of garbage, bringing rats, uh, a lot of crimes going on. And today you go around throughout New York City, Brooklyn, like I say, Queens, Manhattan, the Bronx especially. For the past, uh, four, three, four years, I have seen the Bronx growing like never before. Now, in order for this to keep on, there have to be some motivation for these people to come and invest millions of dollars like they do. I understand the old buildings are there. And as you know now, more than ever, DOB is on top of all these landlord, on top of everything.
Thank you.
I respect that and I understand, I understand. But again, the only way you're going to invest your money is when you get something in return. Otherwise, it's going to stay in your pocket.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Cruz, Mr. Cruz, there's, there's a question.
I have a, a few questions. Um, I have a few questions. One is you talked about investment. There are different types of investment. What type of investment? You said, uh, that people will invest billions of dollars in a community. So what type of investment are we talking about? Because there are different types of investment. Are we talking about just money?
We're talking in general, real estate and all apartment building. That's what we're talking about here. So if I'm going to buy a building from you, I'm going to buy the building from you producing, then I'm going to get it at say capital, 3, 4%. Won't make sense for me to put my money into that building. Especially a building that I probably got to come in. You want to sell it because the building needs a new boiler, need, need windows, need, uh, new floors, new roof. And there's a bunch of apartments that need renovation. Why am I going to invest my money when I'm not going to get anything in return?
So here's my question. After, after that investment is put in, normally there's a return on an investment. So I want to ask you, who will New York City, who will live in New York City after these billions of dollars are put in? Because if you make even $60,000 and your rent is $2,000, it's difficult to live here.
Right, I agree.
I, I, so my question to you is about community investment. Because there's monetary investment and then there's also making of community. So I wonder what your ideas are about community investment and who will New York City before, after the, this monetary investment is put in, right?
Well, what I was saying.
Who will, who will afford to live here? Is it just for millionaires or is it also for people who work in New York City?
We got to create a balance in order for all of us to succeed and be able to stay in New York City. That's why there's a lot of subsidy in New York City. You got Section 8, you got, you got a few other programs out there to subsidize this family who doesn't make, you know, enough money to cover the rent on their own. There's a lot of subsidy out there.
I think the point, I think the point, the question is around, the question is around like, it's fine to subsidize housing when it makes sense, but our data doesn't say that overall tenant landlords are struggling. As we're hearing, we're seeing an imbalance between tenants and landlords. And I think what we're trying to, well, the point we're trying to make is that on this board, our, our mandate is to actually stimulate a, a fair market, which we don't have in New York City. That's why we're in an emergency, right? A state of emergency.
Okay, for example, now, there, there are people, there are people paying rent right now and how other landlords are going to, that's going to become a lot of slam law in New York City because it won't make sense to spend $1 on your building. There's nothing to gain a return, nothing.
Can I ask you where are your buildings exactly?
And that's the point that I'm trying to make. You, we, you actually driving a lot of people to keep their money in their pocket and just to back off or make an investment in New York City because, and, and real estate, because it will not make any sense anymore. So we got to create a balance where investors are motivated to keep on doing what is going on right now in New York City. I never seen so many constructions, so many new buildings through the whole New York City like this past couple of years. And it's because it makes sense at this point. The changes are coming now, it won't make any sense. We're going to see a lot of slam law in New York City if there is no incentive for them.
I, thank you.
I'm a tenant, I'm a swell tenant.
I, I, Mr. Cruz, thank you. We have a lot more speakers, so I just want to make sure we have time for everyone who, who came here tonight through the rain. I have Mr. Figueroa, Ed Figueroa, and then I have Brian Lefkowitz.
I'd like to say good evening to everybody. I'd like to say thank y'all for everybody for coming out. This is so vital. We need y'all to understand that yes, it need to be feared so that the landlords, as well as the tenants to have opportunity. Can you hear me? I'd like to say thank you everybody for coming out tonight. I'd like to thank the representatives of the city and the state. Our problem, the most important is that the governor and the mayor are not working together. That the governor have been abusing the resources he had to provide affordable housing. The mayor have also been part of that, that facade, talking about you trying to work with us. Yes, we understand that landlords, small landlords need help too. So why can't the government provide them with some kind of incentive in order to help affordable housing? This is so vital. How, how is it possible that we're allowing these of, of real estate being developed, but yet you're not finding no kind of program in order to subsidize the, the small landlords as well as the, the citizens? Who, if, if every, who, excuse me one second. How can anybody afford $100,000 a month, $50,000 a month? It's impossible. We're the working people. We is what makes this city run. And if you're going to flush us out, how are we going to, who going, who, who going to come and work and do your work? You think the computer going to do everything? We need your help. We're not here begging, we're here as citizens. Housing is not a, a, it's not something that you're doing us a favor. And it's, it's not a luxury. It's, it's, it's our elementary right as, as American citizens. How are y'all going to allow us to become sheltered? We got y'all to give landlords $3,000 for one room. Come on, it's insanity. We need, we need the mayor and governor to know that this is not a joke. We don't, we want to come here just to be heard. We want you to understand that you're putting children, thousands of children into shelters because y'all refuse to do your job. You know, it's a shame, man. And, and we need you to understand that as American citizens, I'm a veteran. And I'm homeless. That's insanity. Me and my family are homeless. We need y'all to understand that, that y'all have an obligation, not just to your family, but to us. We're your family. When I went to fight for this country, I ain't say I'm fighting for no blacks or fighting for the poor in the community. I fought for this country, for the beautifulness that it represents, for democracy.
Thank you.
Democracy works if we, if we work it. It don't work if they work it by the government, for the government, to the government. And we need you to understand that we don't need you to keep putting the roadblocks in front of us. We need you to work with us as a partner so that we can make America really strong again.
Thank you. I have Brian Lefkowitz to be followed by Empress Bay.
Good evening. Good evening. I was advised by some people that since I'm a Hasidic Jew, I shall refrain from standing up and addressing the board today. My fellow citizens, I decided on the contrary. I'm, I will actually get up and speak because I want to be able to tell my precious kids that I did my utmost to stop hate and bigotry. And I did my utmost to try to bring love and harmony into New York City. Unfortunately, there's very little of this anti-landlord campaign that will really help tenants. The only tenants that are being helped by this campaign are the bad and unfair tenants. Good tenants in the very near future will suffer from this terrible anti-landlord campaign. So I'm here to kindly ask you all, let's stop this hate and let's start working with love. We can accomplish so much more with love by working together as a team. I can comfortably say that 95% of the landlords are fair and decent human beings. And the same goes for the tenants. 95% of the tenants are fair and decent human beings. So for 5% of bad landlords, 5% of bad tenants, we're basically going down a path of destruction and destroying the city's aging housing stock. Peace and love will fix the problem. We need a 7 to 10% increase this year. It's an emergency. I kindly ask, we ask, well, let's do it in peace. We'll listen and you can hear both sides of the story. We're asking for peace. Let's listen, let's be peaceful. That's going to get us a lot further than being increase in legal fees, property tax increase. We have a minimum wage increase. The cost of goods, the cost of a kitchen right now almost doubled because of Chinese tariffs that was put on the product coming from China. Insurance costs going through the roof because we have frivolous lawsuits. I could go through with the board, show you lawsuits that we have. We finally put up cameras and now we have lawsuits of people saying they fell within the apartment. Overall, rent roll will fall due to the new laws in the city, in the state. There's new, new city council laws that are affecting the cost of operating a building. I could go through with you that. I would like to suggest we should stop using a percentage based increase. Under the current percentage system, if a tenant pays a higher rent, then the greater his increase. If a tenant pays a low rent, then the lower his rent.
Mr. Lefkowitz.
I was knocked out. I would like to finish off the point. This is not, this is not a fair system. Why should the tenants paying higher rents have to pay and suffer the largest increases? Let's go to a dollar based system so the tenants paying lower rents pick up a bigger part of the share. We all agree that an $800 rent is not, is not affordable rent, that's free rent. It costs more to run a building. Let's focus on the people's paying low rent to pay a dollar amount where a percent doesn't cover close to their cost. I guess this is the environment we're in. It's a good example and it makes it very difficult. That's why people are afraid to show up. I'm still standing here because I'm a desperate man. I have five kids to feed. I have to take them to school, so that's why I'm here. Frankly speaking, the suggestion that I shouldn't speak was probably, might have been right. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing everybody? I saw y'all in Brooklyn. How y'all doing? I know y'all heard what I had to say. Now I'm going to talk to everybody in Manhattan. My name is Empress Bay. I live in Brooklyn. You see my shirt, Brooklyn forever. I've been Brooklyn all my life. I was born in Brooklyn, into Faith Hospital. And I've been living in low income housing because people like him like to rob the government. Okay? That's just what it is. I'm not even going to sit here and play. The United States Constitution gave us rights. And also human rights laws gave us rights to have adequate housing. So let's talk about the fact that this year I lived in 643 Flankin Avenue, owned by Yoel Goldman and All Year Management. They are the third largest real estate developers in Brooklyn and they gained from these rental increases. Not us, not the little small mom and pop ones, but the big businesses that sit here taking the rent from the low income housing and putting it into them big buildings that the people from Manhattan that live in them high penthouses want to come and live in our neighborhoods. And at the end of the day, I can't afford for them to sit here and increase no rent because let me tell you what happened to me and my family. The landlord wanted to get us out so they could do renovations and put people in my apartment. So they made false allegations to Children's Services. And then they came in my window with the police without a warrant. And took my kids for 33 days. And guess what happened to the cases? Take a guess at what happened to the cases? They got dismissed prima facie, which means they didn't even have no evidence. So they could sit here, lie on the stand in front of housing court judges. Let's keep it real. They said I had the electricity in my building cut off. That's not what happened. They refused to fix the plumbing, so the plumbing is running into electrical wires. They did illegal construction. My building hasn't been inspected in 15 years. 15 years. I got electrical wires, running underwater wires. Plumbing, plumbing is running over the electricity in my room. I got a bathroom in the kitchen from illegal constructions because guess what? All they care about is raising rent. They don't care about if we live in a safe places. Yoel Goldman owns almost all of the low income builders in Brooklyn. And guess what? All of his builders is in a state of disap, don't talk to me because he was talking. All of them was in a state of disrepair. And guess what else? Guess what else? It's children living in apartments with lead based paint, but they getting all this rent and they doing no repairs. It's children living in apartments with lead-based paint, but they getting all this rent and they doing no repairs. And what is this boy gonna do about that? Human rights give us the right to do this. Stop playing. There needs to be a rollback and a freeze, cause I already told you in Brooklyn. I'm taking them to court. My case is sitting on the United States District Court Judge Desk right now. And whoever agree with me, I got a petition right now for you to sign, for me to take it on her desk for an adjective relief to fix this problem. Because they not gonna do it, we gotta do it.
I next have Lena Melendez. Lena Melendez is, is Ms. Melendez in the room? To be followed by Trinity Bay.
My name is Lena Melendez, and I'm from the Riverside Edgecombe Neighborhood Association. I wanna talk about Mayor de Blasio promising to bridge the divide between the tale of two cities. Okay? We get 15 rezonings that reduce the number of rent-regulated apartments, giving away the luxury towers that provide unaffordable apartments. Our culturally-relevant affordable stores are replaced by big-box stores. Unaffordable? We have 63,000 homeless people in New York City and continue, and counting. And there are three empty luxury apartments for every homeless person. That's not right. The most people, most people living a paycheck to paycheck, even a small increase is too much to absorb. The more people pay in rent, the less they have to spend on proper nutrition, childcare, medical care, transportation. More and more people are relying on food pantries. Have you walked around this neighborhood when they're, when they got the food pantries open? There's lines that are around the block. One in five children in New York City struggle with hunger. That's a shame. This is the backdrop. This is the landscape. The tenants who live on fixed incomes, seniors that you heard from, single moms, poor folks working two and three jobs, just being able to pay the rent. They have to deal with that. Well, while for 30 years, the tenants had to endure, endure abuses from the new, that the new rent laws only, only now mitigate, landlords will still be able to profit, just not at the rate that they're used to. I'm sure they will devise some way to exploit tenants. I'm sure of that. The income-well inequality in New York City is immoral, it's unjust, and it's disgusting.
Thank you.
And raising rents contributes. It contributes to that income-well inequality. Last year, you guys raised the rent 1.5% and 2.5%. It appears that you have become desensitized to human pain and suffering. It desensitized. You guys don't feel it, right? You guys don't feel it, then you don't think about it, you don't have to see it, and you don't have to live with it. You can go outside of that range that you, that you set. Vote 0% or be a part of the system that created and perpetuates this disgusting inequality. You have the power. You have the power to vote no.
Thank you.
Freeze the rent.
I have, I have Trinity Bay, Trinity Bay, to be followed by Autumn Bay.
Good evening. My...
Good evening.
Good evening. My application is Princess Trinity Bay. I am here to respectfully demand a rent freeze. I am 12 years old. Me and my siblings are one of the many children to suffer from the... To suffer from... Me and... Me and my siblings are some of the many children to suffer from the rent raise and... You know why she feeling like that? Cause she's suffering from PTSD from being removed from her mother. Because her landlord is greedy. Excuse the child. Because at the end of the day, she's only saying this because she knows what it feels like to be separated from her mom. Hold on, you still got time. Speak to them. Be slow. I have been removed from a home, my home, because of certain people who decide to put children in the way of adult matters, which means that basically they used us to get rid of the people that deserve rightful housing. I believe, I believe that children deserve a safe place to live for the time being they need to grow up. And for the children after me, for after where I grew up, to have the same thing, so...
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. I have Autumn, Autumn Bay, and then Richard, and then I have Richard Bradford after Autumn.
Hi. My name... My name is Autumn. My name's Autumn, and I'm seven years old. I want a safe place to live and... Yes, and... I got it, I got it, I got it.
Hello, my name is Prince Xerxes Al-Amin Bay. I imagine it.
I have something to say still.
Autumn, go ahead, Autumn.
I was removed from my house two times.
My name is Prince Xerxes Al-Amin Bay, and I live in 643 Franklin Avenue, apartment 200. And I had no problem with it until one day I was taking out my garbage and the landlord was parked, well, the super was parked in front of the building. And I just ignored him, and I put the gun in the garbage. I guess he just finished putting the garbage on the curb or something. I don't know. But then he got, he got, he got out his car, and he said, "Don't put it in there, don't put it in there." He started yelling at me in different language. Then he threw the garbage I put inside the garbage can over the gate into the other person, the other building's basement. And as I was leaving, cause he was yelling at me, "Go, go, go," he pushed me into the gate. And the same day... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have...
Bye.
I have Richard Bradford to be followed by Johnny Barnes. Richard Bradford?
Let's address the real problem. Hideous Wall Street. They made 20, 23 trillion dollars last year. They're influencing all of you. They bought everything. The, the property values have skyrocketed so high. They're destroying, they're turning our city into a Gucci, Louis Vuitton shopping mall. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. You fucking scumbags. My landlord just changed the keys to the, to the front door, and he says, "Oh, cause we live in an S R L, thank God for Goddard Riverside Law Project, I'd be living in the gutter." It's so lovely. What a lovely city. Totally for the rich. He says, "Oh, we're gonna change the locks." And he says, "And if you want a replacement, it's $200 a key." You know, it's like, and, and you people let it go on and on and on and on. It's embarrassing. I should, I hope your ears hurt. I hope they all hurt. Cause you don't listen. You don't fucking listen. The greed is destroying our city. The greatest city in the world is being devoured by greed. Hideous greed, where some fucking scumbag, he should be in prison, can make grotesque amounts of money and buy all the politicians off. And the only reason why you're losing is because the Democrats took over lovely Albany. And fuck, and goddamn Cuomo didn't take all those millions off the billionaire landlords who own this town.
I have Johnny Barnes to be followed by David Gugel, or Google. Johnny Barnes?
I ain't got much to say, but I got something to say. What we got here is an argument between the needy and the greedy. You see, because I'm here and not homeless because of my friend so good, Mr. Larry Wood. I've been with him about 15 years now, and he's really on the job. And I would just like to thank y'all for this here thing. As far as the freeze goes, give 'em iceberg Antarctica. Thank you.